The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920. The League of Women Voters of the Motherlode was founded in 2017. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support nor endorse political parties or candidates. This forum is being recorded and can be seen in its entirety on Access Tuolumne and on our website. We retain all rights to the recordings and it must be shown in its entirety. The moderator this evening for the Tuolumne County Board of Supervisors is Ms. McHenry. Ms. McHenry is a resident of Calaveras County, and she has been a member of the League for over 50 years. She has served as the League President two times and is a very skilled moderator. Ms. McHenry?
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you all for being here. My name, as she said, is Brenda McHenry. We have some rules for this forum that I must remind you about. First, the rules for you, the audience. Please silence your cellphones. We have no photos or electronic equipment is allowed. Restrooms located right outside this door. And please, no applause or verbal reactions. Our purpose here is to hear what the candidates have to tell us. Following the program, the candidates will be available. You can meet them on the second floor, two floors down. There is a reason for that, is there is another forum immediately following this one, and we need to clear out the room so that people can listen to the Sonora City Council Next, here are the forum rules. The speaking order has been determined via coin flip earlier. Mr. Titchinal will go first, followed by Mr. Campbell. Each candidate will have a one-minute opening statement. The League of Women Voters Observer Corps has prepared a series of questions with some input from community members. Same questions will be asked of both candidates. Answers are limited to one minute, and will alternate between candidates. After the question-and-answer period, each candidate may give a two-minute closing statement in reverse order. And finally, the candidate rules. All of your statements and answers will be timed. Our timekeepers, down here with little signs, will hold up a yellow warning sign when 30 seconds is up, 15 seconds are left, and a red stop sign when time is up. At that point, you can finish a sentence, as long as it's a short sentence. But go no further.
Why did you look at me when you said that?
No, I was looking at you. I'll introduce the two candidates. In alphabetical order, they are Ryan Campbell and David Titchinal. Thank you both for appearing here tonight. The first statement is by Mr. Titchinal. You have one minute.
All right, I think instead of talking about where I grew up or anything like that, I'd like to talk about what I believe and maybe just important what I don't believe. I don't believe that when a criminal steals $1,000 or less worth of merchandise that they should be able to go scot-free. I do believe in funding our law enforcement, and I believe it's the priority of government to do that. I don't think letting fire fuels build up in the forest does anybody any good. I do believe that if government can help create a partnership between public and private, we can make the forest more resilient and make it more safer for everybody. And finally, I'd like to make a comment about children. I don't think any of our children should, I'm not going to be able to get through this, but anyway, I think our children shouldn't be allowed to fall through the cracks, and I'll talk more about that maybe in my closing statement, but I think I'm at my end. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, and thank you very much to the League and for everybody that's here today. This is a very important discussion. I am Ryan Campbell. I am your District Two Supervisor, and for the past four years, I have done my best. I have poured my heart and soul into being the best voice that I can be for District Two. So I have invested everything my family has in this community, my wife, and my wife Hallie, and my daughters River, Chloe, and Evy. Everything that we are is invested in Tuolumne County, and so that is why I wanted to run in the first place in 2018, and that commitment, I think, is why you elected me at that time. And since then, I have done everything that I could do through one of the most difficult and challenging times this county has faced, and I can sit here and tell you that we are stronger and in a better position than we have ever been in Tuolumne County, and I am filled with purpose and optimism about the road ahead. And so that is why I'm here to talk to you about all of these positive things going on in the community, and I'm looking forward to having that conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's begin with the questions. The first set of questions is on wildfire issues. And Mr. Titchinal, you get to answer first. Tuolumne County, like much of California, is a high-fire zone. This impacts safety and homeowners' insurance. What would you propose as a supervisor to make our county more fire-safe?
Okay, good question, of course. We have various levels of fire danger just in District Two alone. We have Cedar Ridge, which is down in a valley, has some real problems with how you get out of there, how you escape. We have Willow Springs, not nearly as densely forested, but you know, if we're talking immediate safety of the people in District Two, we have to start much further out than that. If we're going to stop a fire, it has to be way before it even gets to any of those areas. So we have to make sure that we're doing what they call shaded fuel breaks and clearings, and a lot of this stuff is already going on, but it's a thing that has to be budgeted for, and we have to continue to do it year after year because everything grows back. And so doing the thinning and the preparation of the forest materials, getting all that fire fuels out, is the most important thing that we can do to keep people safe.
Campbell?
Yes, so this is probably one of the central questions in Tuolumne County, and the answer to what we should do is what the county has been doing right now is investing in fire equipment. We've purchased a new Type One fire engine, and we have two water tenders on the way. We're trying to shore up our aging equipment. We are aggressively seeking fire safety grants in our community. In fact, I personally wrote a $1.6 million grant, and if you live in Cedar Ridge and you're one of the about 160 households that had fire vegetation removal, it was paid for under that grant. So I have a background in the Office of Emergency Services, and so I'm very familiar with the process to obtain funding for fire resources, and that's exactly what I've been trying to do over the past three years, and I think we've been very successful in our county. We're in a much better position in terms of fire safety than we were three years ago. However, there is still a lot of work to do and a lot of challenges ahead, and I want to be there and make sure that we can address them.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, I'm going to ask you the second question, which is related. How do you propose to fund needed fire service?
So the main element that we're using right now is grant funding for vegetation removal. Some of those projects, for example, the Cyril project that's going on in the U.S. Forest Service land, that is, it's actually, much of it is in District Two, so it's a very central issue for my district, that is grant funds. So it's either federal or state grants. Because the problem is so big, the Tuolumne County property taxpayers could never be able to contribute enough to be able to resolve all of those fire fuels in the forest. So that's part of it. The other part of it is reprioritizing where your tax dollars do go, and part of that has been to invest in, as I said before, fire equipment. So we are trying to replace engines as they go bad, as they get old and rusty. We are investing in new safety equipment for our firefighters. So everybody has to help. It has to be at the state level, and at the local level, and the federal level.
Thank you. Mr. Titchinal?
Yeah, funding's always going to be a problem. You know, we tried to do a thing called Measure V a couple of years ago, and it failed miserably. Seventy percent of the county, I think, turned it down, and there's good reasons for that. It wasn't the fact that people didn't want to buy more firefighting apparatus or put money towards equipment. It was just the way that that particular funding mechanism was put together, and we can probably still do another thing like V, but it has to start with input from the people. It can't be done in the back rooms. It can't be sprung on people at the last minute. And beyond that, you know, the money has to come from, like what my opponent said, it has to come from much larger sources, and Tuolumne County can't do that on their own, but we can build on what previous supervisors like Randy Handfelt has done. I mean, he single-handedly did a great job bringing in a lot of money to this county, and with his counsel, I plan on following some of the same paths that he talks to me about.
Thank you. Mr. Titchinal, you get the next question, which is also related to this issue. How do we ensure that citizens and visitors can safely evacuate in the event of a disaster?
This is, this was one that I'm really concerned about, living in Willow Springs myself. Every year, I go on vacation up in Oregon and on the coast, and they have these tsunami evacuation signs posted everywhere, like a left arrow, right arrow, leading you to higher ground. We don't have anything like that in any of our subdivisions, but we probably could. Now, I'm working with the sheriff right now. He tells me there's reasons why he doesn't want to have an exact escape route, because there's decisions that have to be made in the heat of the moment. Excuse my words there, but, but so, you know, rather than that, but what we do need is what they call muscle memory. We have to be able to practice these escape routes. We have to identify what they are. We have only one good escape route out of most of our neighborhoods, and we need an alternate egress, and we're working on getting some of those fixed up in Willow Springs, and we do the same thing in Cedar Ridge. But we, you know, we just have to keep practicing and put these plans together and get the information out to everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, that last statement, I think, is very correct. Practice makes perfect, and we need to make sure that the education is available for our community so that they can take agency over their own safety. There are situations where the sheriff is not going to be able to come to your house and not be going to be able to rescue you, and so we have to make sure that our citizens are aware of and, to a certain degree, trained in how to evacuate and how to prioritize with a go-bag and prioritize the types of things that they need to take with them if they have to go. Having an evacuation plan is very key, and that's one of the things that we've, you know, I bring up grants a lot, but we actually did receive a grant for education elements for firewise communities, and that is part of it, is getting communities to be aware of what they need to do when the call goes out to evacuate. And a very important element of that is for people to sign up for our county's emergency contact list.
Thank you. I'm going to move now to budget, and you get the first question, Mr. Campbell, and that is, the county has a proposed $236 million budget. What areas would you be comfortable trimming? What areas do you feel need more funding?
Well, that's a good ques, and so the budget that we have now is stronger and healthier than it has been in nearly a decade, and I think a lot of that comes from the hard work that has come from the board on which I serve. And if you're talking about specific elements that we could trim, you know, I don't want to call out one department or another. I don't think that would be fair to them without giving a close look at where there are, but there are certainly areas that we could be more efficient in any budget. And if we're talking about adding to different areas of the budget, I think, you know, obviously, fire protective services and law enforcement are key and central to our community. I think also that our Community Development Agency is something that is central to the operation of our county and people being able to live and work and do business here, and so that needs, probably needs to be shored up more. We always need to, I'm a very strong believer in supporting the library and our parks and recreation department as well.
Thank you. Mr. Titchinal?
If you see these things on the wall behind you over here, these are priorities and ideas that the current Board of Supervisors put up there, and not on one, not on any of them does it talk about trimming more employees. In fact, it talks a lot about employees they want to add back. Now, I'm a firm believer that larger government doesn't necessarily mean better government. I think we have a really good group of employees that work here already, and I think if we remove their obstacles and give them tools to help them work faster and better, maybe tools like the authority to make decisions at the line level. So when there's behind that counter and they're helping somebody out, they can make decisions right then and there and get that person on their way. Trimming, I think we've trimmed as much as we're ever going to be able to trim until we either lose more people population-wise and we just reduce the size of government because of that, but we're running really, really lean right now as it is.
Okay, thank you. And the next question, what areas should always be funded, which are not mandated?
My question, right? My question?
That's your question.
Yeah, okay. Law enforcement, public safety in general should always be funded, mandated or not. I think we, the number-one complaint out there is roads, so we have to find a way to do the roads better. We're the worst on the list, and so I'm coming 26th on the index scale. That's unacceptable to me, and people will always tell you, "Well, we're out of money. We don't get enough money back from all of our tax dollars that we send in," and a lot of that has a ring of truth to it, but it doesn't mean that we stop trying, and I think that's what's happened. Over 40 years, we've kicked this can down the road, and we have to stop doing that. We got to really decide that, you know, now is when we're going to do that. If we're, if we're building a budget of 200 and something million dollars for the county, then somewhere in there, we got, some things have to be changed, and we have to figure out how to start improving some of the roads a little bit at a time, whether it's a mile a year, or whether it's, you know, stop using some roads if we have to and come up with alternatives. But there's a lot of alternatives and a lot of, well, sorry, we're done.
And how about you, Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if, if there is funding for a nonmandated department or project or what have you that makes it difficult to provide the services that are mandated, like law enforcement, like fire, like the jail, these, like social services, those have to come first. They have to. We are bound by law to make sure that those things are funded, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't move heaven and earth to make sure that we can put as much aside planning for the future, that we can maintain our libraries, which are not mandated, maintain our parks and recreation department, which again is not mandated, and yet I think we would all agree that they are extremely important community resources. And, you know, if there is any money left over, I have done my best to make sure that it goes to roads and infrastructure in our county, and those things are very, very important, but yet not mandated.
And, Mr. Campbell, you have the next, the next question is, do you support placing another sales tax increase or parcel tax on the next ballot to support fire measures? Why or why not?
So this, there, I would say, not at this time, not on this next ballot measure. It obviously depends on what is in it. I remember the experience with Measure V that was mentioned earlier. I think there is more work that needs to be done to understand what our community, what kind of cost our community is willing to bear, and I don't think that work has been done yet. And so without knowing the cost to each individual citizen, where that money is going to go, how it's going to be collected, and making sure that we do the groundwork ahead of time to where we have buy-in from the community, it'd be really hard to be successful with a ballot measure, and that's just the facts of how they work. And so until that work has been done, which, you know, if someone is, if we're able to do that, I could support it, but as things sit now, I don't support that on the next ballot.
Thank you. Mr. Titchinal?
Well, I'm not, I'm never a guy who wants to see taxes, but right now, with the inflation the way it is, with the rate hike we're going to see from TUD, it's very important that they're doing what they're doing, but with that rate hike and this inflation, now is not the time to talk about any kind of taxes at all. And so I do not think, even for fire right now, a sales tax is going to help us at all. We have so many people in this county who are scraping by, and when they get hit with some of these new fees, and, you know, we haven't even really seen this recession. It's going to rear its ugly head more towards fall, and it's really going to be tough for a while, but we're a tough, resilient people, and we'll get through it. But no, no, no taxes right now. Let's get on a more established road, and let's get our revenues kicking in better, and then we can talk about possibly a sales tax. I'm not sure if that's the best tax to do, but there, you know, and once I'm sitting up here permanently, then I'll really have some good ideas that we can start kicking around.
Thank you. Move now to the topic of economic health of the community, and Mr. Titchinal, you get to go first here. What would you propose to meet the need for affordable housing for first-time buyers in the county?
I don't like that term "affordable housing." I don't know what it means. I don't know what you think it means. I don't know what you think it means over here. What I like is maybe workforce housing, because that's what we need. If we're going to grow our revenue, grow our industry in this county, we need places for workers to be able to live, and so workforce housing, you know, needs to be plentiful at this point, because we just don't have anything. There's no extra inventory in any kind of housing right now. So we need to go back to the drawing board. We need to, you know, where does that start? It starts with somebody, a developer who wants to do something, wants, thinks this is a good place to make an investment, and I think what's happened here in the past, maybe it's, we're not a very attractive investment right now, so we need to determine why that is and change inside ourselves, why are we not looking good to developers, and what can we do to help get them up here and start looking at us again? And then we need to talk to the industry that wants to come up here and start a new business and find out what they need in the way of housing. Thanks.
Thank you. Campbell?
Yes, so if we're realistic about the issue of affordable housing in Tuolumne County, we have to look at the situation in the rest of the state of California. We are at the mercy of markets that are so much larger than our community that the amount that the Board of Supervisors or any agency in Tuolumne County can do to change that is very limited. However, that doesn't mean that people aren't looking to us to be leaders and to find ways to make that situation better, and that goes to part of the reason why I mentioned earlier that I would like to see greater investment in our Community Development Department, because when somebody has a project or they have an idea to build available housing, that process needs to be streamlined. There need to be people available to shepherd that through the process, and that is where the county intersects with this larger market of finding available housing. And so that's where we can invest our time and energy, and just hoping that things change in a state like California is really not the way to go.
Thank you. Our next question, Mr. Campbell, is, when looking at proposed economic growth projects, how would you, as a supervisor, balance those proposals with concerns about adequate infrastructure and water availability?
And, oh, sorry.
No, that's a...
So that is a question I have faced in the real world many, many times as a supervisor, and it is, it's difficult to go to a project and say that we must have all infrastructure in place before anything can possibly be built. I don't think that's realistic, and plus, it begs the question, who's going to pay for that infrastructure for a project that may or may not happen down the road? And so these two things need to happen concurrently. There need to be investment in projects in a particular area where there is, where there is sometimes less resources available, and then the county needs to come in and work out an agreement with those projects with whatever community service district is in the area, find ways to provide those services. I think that process, I think, and I think it's the impetus for this question. That process is going on right now in the South County area, Groveland area, where a lot of new development is going on, and it's an issue that we've, we've been facing, and I think we're getting, getting to a good solution.
Thank you. Mr. Titchinal?
I need to ask you to repeat that question, please.
Sure. When looking at proposed economic growth projects, how would you, as a supervisor, balance those proposals with concerns about adequate infrastructure and water availability?
I'm sorry, I guess I'm not understanding roke, road proj, the...
Economic growth projects.
Can you spell that for me? I'm just not, rote?
Growth, growth.
Growth, oh, okay, I'm sorry. I couldn't get that. Okay. Well, growth projects and infrastructure, they are kind of hand in hand, aren't they? And it's, it's, I'm looking at a thing that happened near, next to Willow Springs a number of years back, a developer there, he went through a 20-year period of trying to come up with something that would make the county happy. He started off with a plan that required, that he wanted to do a bunch of big, large acreage homes, you know, mini farms or McMansions or whatever, and then added more that word "affordable housing," and then put in some apartments, and then, you know, kept making these trade-offs, and the infrastructure was always being, being pushed around, and it was, it was difficult for them to be able to find a way to make that profitable. And so we always have to be willing, as a county, I think, to look at the other side of the coin, and that is, what is the profitability of a project? And we can't push everything off onto the guy who's trying to bring something that is, could be a win-win situation. I see where that doesn't happen a lot of times, and so I think we just have to, you know, look at it with new, fresh eyes and, and not follow the same ethics that we've always done in the past.
Thank you. Our next topic, with, beginning with you, Mr. Titchinal, is unsheltered residents. What would be the key components of your homeless action plan to help reduce the number of citizens experiencing homelessness in the county?
Pretty simple for me. One is, we don't expand the size of government. We don't hire anybody else on the government payroll to deal with unsheltered residents. I like that term. You know, what we do is we reach out to non-government organizations and faith-based organizations. They do a really good job already. There's just not enough of it going on to handle the 1,500 or so homeless people that we have in the county. So we look at some of the projects that we already have going, like Resiliency Village up on Big Hill, and Habitat for Humanity has just done a wonderful job, especially out there with the village in Columbia, and if we can imagine expanding those ideas and doing them in more places around the county, I know that the, that they're coming out with some ideas for some actual produce camping areas that we can start moving these people into, so at least it's a more, a more humane way of giving them a spot where they have some, some water and some electricity, so.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, and thank you, and I really want to thank you for the way you phrase that question. I think too often, we refer to people as the homeless, as though it's, you know, it's something they, they chose, or, and I think talking about people that are experiencing homelessness is a very important way to phrase it, and I think one of the central problems and the reason why this problem has gotten worse and worse and worse is that the, that the county hasn't worked with these agencies. You know, if we talk about, you know, faith-based and nonprofit groups, they've, they've already been shouldering the load of homelessness in our county forever. The county has tried to take a hands-off approach and just, just hope that things get better on their own, and it hasn't worked. And so only now, only in the past two or three years, has the county in earnest tried to address this problem, and there's a lot of movement at the state level to fund programs, and it has to come through the county. So whether, no matter what we choose to do... So whether, no, no matter what we choose to do, the county has to play a role in that, because we will be the conduit for much-needed funding for homelessness, and so we have to have a seat at the table in that.
Going to move now to the topic of transportation. And, Mr. Campbell, you get to answer that first. What would you, as a supervisor, do to improve the quality of the county's roads and maintain them into the future, given the reality of a county road fund that is static?
I, I can tell you what, what I am doing, which is that, basically, this is the issue that I spend the most time on, if I divide up my, my tasks, is I look at ways to bring money into our county and better allocate the money that we have. Part, this was a central reason why I ran for the Board of Supervisors, I felt my district in particular was completely neglected, and it has been slow-going, but there is definite improvement in the, the scope and scale of road improvements in my district. You can take Willow Springs Drive, which was recently had a resurfacing treatment just in the past month. We have purchased a new pothole patching machine, which is working throughout the county, and it, it takes a long time and a lot of commitment to get major road projects done, because as you said, they're very expensive. And so that's why I have spent a lot of time becoming aware of the different types of funding sources. I'm on the Transportation Council, I communicate with Caltrans frequently, and it has netted us millions of dollars in grants just in the past two years, so it has been, it's a long haul, but we're, we're getting, we're slowly improving.
Thank you. Mr. Titchinal.
Well, even though we're slowly improving, we're still 26th, bottom of the list. Let's, let's imagine a guy named Pete wakes up in the morning in San Jose, puts his family in the car, off for a day in Yosemite. He stops in Oakdale, fuels up his car, drives right through Tooluma County, up Highway 120, spends the day in Yosemite, comes back, maybe stops for a hamburger somewhere along the way, and then he refuels in Oakdale again and back down to, to San Jose. We never got one credit for the gas that he used to drive through our county and the pressure that he put on our roads. And then there's also the, the idea of electronic vehicles, electric vehicles that are going to be more and more and more as we go, and we don't have any mechanism to get the revenue out of them to put towards our roads. So, we have a lot of thinking to do, how we're gonna, how we're gonna react in, in the future, and the future is here now. So there's different ideas that I have, incentives that might, might get somebody to remember, oh yeah, there was this, this free thing I got if I stopped in, in Tooluma County and got my gas, so maybe I'm gonna wait till I get there. So at least we can start getting credit for those tax dollars that we're missing out on now.
We're going to move to the topic of the community. Mr. Titchinal, you're first. The COVID-19 pandemic brought to the surface divisions within the county, within the country and within our community. What role can the board as a whole, and you as a supervisor, play in building unity in our community?
It's a hot, hot-button topic, for sure. Building unity requires that we, we find some kind of a, a common bit of truth that we can gather around. Unfortunately, what happened with the science in this matter, it got corrupted, and once it was corrupted, nobody could point to it in every, as, as a, a goalpost of truth, they pointed to it and made it politically advantageous to their point of view. So we have to find some way of finding, you know, real information that we can gladly share, and perhaps that is more town hall-style meetings and more inclusive information other than just what comes out of the CDC or the WHO or, or things like that. We have to, there's so much information out there and the, the ability to get it from so many different sources, but that's the only way you're gonna ever bring people around, is if they can find a common area of interest in something like the pandemic that they can all believe in and, and, and find some truth in it.
Yeah, so I've been a supervisor from the start of the pandemic to now, and so I saw the entire history of, of how it developed and, and how our community reacted to it in, in our county. And so we were kind of at the epicenter of, of what was going on, and it's very diffi- it's easy to, to sit in the clear light of day and, and say how things could have been done differently, but I think, given the information that we had, our county did, oh, the, the county as an organization did a very good job trying to share information with the community that wasn't always very clear at the time. And, you know, talking about town hall meetings, I held over at least a dozen town hall meetings on Zoom, to try and share this information with the community and make sure that we do have a science-based approach to this, and that the people in public health, in doctors, nurses, the people that are at the forefront of this, that we support them, because without them, we are lost. They are the ones that, that truly have been saving lives and making sure that this doesn't become, that the virus didn't become worse than it was.
Okay, thank you. There is, there is one more question. We'll start with you, and it has to do with the arts. How would you propose ongoing funding for the Tooluma County Arts Council?
So, the, well, I can talk about the American Rescue Plan Act enabled our county to set up a, a grants program that we specifically wanted programs like the arts to apply for that. Now, that's not, that's one-time fund, that's not ongoing funds, but I think making sure that the county can partner with the Arts Council so that they can get community investment so that there can be public-private partnerships in that, to make sure that the arts are healthy and thriving, and making sure that they have the support to be able to have a location to, to hold programs, and, and that's an area where I think the county should absolutely be working with, with the arts. And, so, there are a variety of ways that communities typically fund arts programs, and I think we need to look at all of them, it includes public-private partnerships, and making sure that we're more aggressively getting out there and getting the community to invest in these important things.
Thank you. Mr. Titchinal.
Well, I think we do a pretty good job in the arts up here. I've been a resident my whole life, I'm third generation, and I've never seen as much availability for going out and seeing a play, or listening to music, or, or doing those kind of things as, as there seems to be now. So even, even through the pandemic, I think it helped to keep our spirits up, you know, when everybody had to mask up, it made it a little bit more difficult to attend a play and do some of those things. But I think arts, it's not the, people aren't gonna like this answer, but it is not the wheelhouse of government to invest in the arts. It isn't, you know, it has to be the people, it's something that people get out of it and people put back into it, and it's just one of those things that I don't believe, and it's my personal belief, I don't believe government should be putting a whole lot of money into the arts programs. I think it has to be done as a private situation between, between people. We shouldn't be the patrons for individual artists or programs.
Thank you. We're going to start with our two-minute closing statements, and we begin with Mr. Campbell.
Well, I'm really grateful to have this opportunity to talk, to be able to campaign and talk to people about what kind of job I've been doing over the past four years. I'm very proud of the work that I've been able to do, and the faith that our community has showed in me to be your, to elevate the voices of our community on the Board of Supervisors. There are very few places where your county, where your government in general, where the rubber meets the road in, in essence, where you can actually communicate and know your supervisor, and know the people that are doing the most important things, I would say, in our community, making sure roads are, are travelable, public safety, fire, libraries, parks, the things that touch our lives in the most direct way are the things that are important to me, and they're the things that I've spent the most time working on. Some of the, I, I wanted to speak so much about the road subject, because it's something I spend a lot of time on. We've brought more than $4.2 million in, whether it's grant funds, or STP, or ARP, or, these are a lot of acronyms, and I don't expect people to know what they all are, but the point is that I know what they are, and I've made it my business to make sure that I understand where this money comes from, where it's available, who is the person to talk to to obtain these grant funds, and is having real-world benefits in our county. For example, we're using a million dollars of ARPA funds to repave a section of Q and Mill Road, which is one of the worst roads in our county, and that's gonna happen very soon, because we're able to do that. And if you look at Phoenix Lake Road, we moved another source of funding around to be able to help repave that road and make it more safe, where there was a, in the area where there was an actual fatal accident. And so, this is all to say that, that I am very, I'm trying to communicate as much as I can with the constituents to understand what is important to them, and what's important to them is important to me. And I just look toward my family and my friends and my neighbors, and I think about what kind of community do I want to, to leave for them in my time, and, and that's what, what drives me and gives me strength.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Titchinal, two minutes.
First of all, I want to say thanks for having us tonight. This is a great event, and I've really enjoyed myself. And I'm gonna spend the rest of my time talking about one, one of the things that's very important and a passion of mine, and that is children. I have been a foster parent for more than 20 years and, in Tooluma County, and also worked at the Children's Emergency Shelter and when we had it at the Hope House. And Tooluma County has had a really good child welfare and foster program. It's stumbling a little bit as of late, and there are reasons for that, but we won't get into that tonight. But, you know, should, should you decide to make me your District Two Supervisor, that's one of the places I'm gonna spend a lot of time. If you've never seen children that have been pulled out of a home at 3:00 in the morning because of violence in the home, or domestic abuse, or other situations that are almost unspeakable, it really, it really is something. And the emergency shelter that we have that was built a long time ago really is a great asset. Another great asset that we used to have is called the Hope House. Now, children that grow up in the foster system and don't ever get placed end up aging out of the foster system. In other words, they're too old to be taken care of by, by the foster group. And we used to have a thing called the Hope House, and that was a transition home where kids could go, and for two years, they could go to school, they could get a job, they could learn how to work a checkbook, they could learn how to do their clothes, they could do, you know, all these different things to prepare them to be good citizens and productive adults when they are totally aged out. We've lost that, we no longer have the Hope House. So these kids, when they, when they age out, they're simply looking at homelessness right up front, that's the first thing they, they have to start dealing with. So I would like to get that going again, I'd like to rebuild the Hope House, and I'd like to make sure that we're always looking after the most vulnerable in our county, and that's the children.
Thank you very much. Thank you for both candidates, and thank you, our audience. I'll remind you again that we have to clear the room for our next floor, and if you'd like to talk with the candidates, they will be downstairs on the second floor. Here again, League of Women Voters President, Pamela.
Thank you, audience, for attending. The League of Women Voters of the Motherlode's Forum for Tooluma County's Superintendents, Board, County Board of Supervisors. We hope you found it informative, and remember that your vote is your voice.